You are lost.
Is that the thing that's streaming on?
Yeah.
Do you look at the test?
Testing the streaming audio. Can you hear me? Todd is doing a test. Todd, how's it look?
Looks pretty good. Looks, I mean, it's a fixed focus.
It's not gonna, it can't change.
I'm gonna see the expressions on everybody's face. Let's tell her there's a body there.
Yeah. One of the good things is to have sound in general.
Oh, Virgil says there's no sound. Virgil says there's no sound.
That's because you haven't been talking.
Talking, yeah. Test, test what it is.
Hello? Virgil, are you out there? Virgil, can you hear us?
Are we ready? Is he hearing us?
We don't have a word yet. Virgil, please respond to Becky's text. Todd is going to go in the other room and see if he can hear through his headset. Todd, can you hear me? Anyone out there? Todd, can you hear the audio? Can't?
Oh, now he said he can.
He can? Okay, if he can, then do that.
All right, then. Really good, because we want to start this meeting.
Just do, please try to, sorry, please try to talk into your mics so that the streamers can hear us.
All right.
Thank you.
We will call this meeting to order. This is the regular Board of Trustees' meeting for today. Today is Tuesday, February 1st. The time is 7:01. All trustees are present except for trustee Quinn at this time. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda tonight? Seeing none? I would move approval?
I'll second.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Item three is the consent agenda, which is the accounts payable from January 2nd to January 31st, minutes from the Board of Trustees' meeting on January 4th, and minutes from the work session which was held January 18th. Does anyone on the board have any corrections or additions to these? I'd move approval?
I'll second.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Now, motion passes. Item four is ordinance 2022-01, which is the CSU franchise agreement. We do have a couple of representatives from CSU here tonight. Would one or both of you want to give a brief, a little brief statement on this franchise agreement?
Can you hear me? Or is it, do I need to turn it on? Okay. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Bethany Burgess. I'm an attorney in the City Attorney's Office for the City of Colorado Springs. And I represent Colorado Springs Utilities. We are here, of course, I think in support of your town manager. And we're very appreciative of her placing this on your agenda for consideration tonight. This is what we're looking for, I believe, is your support of the ordinance extending or renewing the franchise agreement for electric service with the City of Colorado Springs or Colorado Springs Utilities. I think one thing I would note is we do, the primary significant change between this and the previous franchise agreements we've had with Green Mountain Falls relates to the establishment of the franchise fee. In the past, it was based on a volumetric charge. And in working with your town staff, we have converted that to a fixed percentage of revenues. And I think that actually results in a slightly higher payment to the Town of Green Mountain Falls for this franchise fees. Other than that, I think most of, there were a few other minor changes that are really not substantial. They were just changing the voice from passive voice to active voice and a few other clerical changes. But we're very pleased to be here. And we really appreciate our continued relationship with the Town of Green Mountain Falls. And we look forward to continuing to provide electric service here for the next term of this franchise agreement. And I'm also here if there are any questions. All right, thank you, thank you.
Board, do you have any questions? Becky, do you have anything to add to that?
No, just that we went ahead and ran this through legally. So it's looked really standard and good to go.
All right. In that case, Board, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'm sorry if I overlooked it, but I was looking for maintenance of streetlights. Is that part of this agreement or is that something else?
Not necessarily part of this agreement, but Steve Payne and I have spoken. And they're definitely looking into the one streetlight that is down at the park above the memorial bench that has been out of service for some time. With the, in regards to maintenance, I couldn't find anything specifying that they were to maintain those. They replaced those for the town in 2009, I believe. They replaced the gas-lit ones. And they are now property of the town.
There seems to be a malfunction at the intersection of U-Pass Ave and Spruce.
I'll look into that.
Thanks.
All right, anything further? And I would like to entertain a motion to approve this ordinance.
So I'll move to approve ordinance 2022-01, granting the renewal franchise to Colorado Springs Utilities.
I'll second.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. Item five is Resolution 2022-02, which is designation of a public, of public posting places. Boy, I'll never get that out. Designation of public posting place. Becky, do you want to address that briefly? I'll defer to our clerk. All right.
Yeah, so this is just a standard annual resolution that needs to be passed in the beginning of the year. Just designated, designating the official posting place for hearing notices and meeting information. Basically, I just copied what was done in the past, so I hope that's okay. We definitely do try to post, well, we definitely do post on the building here on the window. And also, down at the post office, we have the two glass, whatever you call it, the bulletin boards. It's been a long day, thank you. And so, we definitely do that in addition to the website. And then if there's any special public hearing for election or anything like that, we'll definitely, any additional, we'll pay attention to that to make sure we're following statute on any of those special circumstances.
For the resolution's purpose, the official place is the website, correct? All right. Board, any questions?
I just want to make sure, because I haven't paid attention to anything in the post office in a while, only because we don't do the minutes there anymore. It's just random things that have been there for a while. I want to make sure that we make it really clear to people that they can find everything on the website. If we can make like a little placard or something to put in there just to say, "For all official things, please check here." And just as much as we can possibly try to keep the post office site updated just for the benefit of citizens that don't use internet too much or aren't internet savvy, just...
We could do that. I'm on a routine of going down there most, you know, most every day. So just this week, I cleaned up.
After a couple of weeks, it's like my box is pretty full, so.
This week, I cleaned up some of the old information that was in there. And I posted, I put up some, I, how to say it? Duplicated the volunteer notices, so there's like three of those in each one. Because that's kind of a priority to get some volunteers now on committees. But I'm down there every day, just about. So I can do that. And it's not a problem to even put minutes in there or whatever. But if we will put a, that's a good idea to just put a referral to the website and just say this, the noted, or the website is our official place. So if you don't see anything here, check the website. So I can definitely do that.
Great, thank you. All right, Board, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 2022-02, designating the official public notice posting place as the town website.
I'll second that.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion passes, thank you. Item six is Resolution 2022-03, Organization Resolution and Agreement for UMB Card Administration. Becky, I think it's you this time.
Yes, this is a resolution being requested by UMB Card Services, which authorizes the town manager to perform administrative functions, including ordering checks, authorizing credit limits, et cetera, and establishes the town clerk as the record keeper. What this really does is it creates a system of checks and balances, ensuring the protection of the bank and the town's financial assets.
All right, Board, any questions? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve. And I have to find the number here. 2022-03 for the UMB Card Services Authorization.
I'll second. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I think in, does it say, it says 2022 on the document?
I'm sorry. I'll double-check that. I know I, the agenda should be right. I may have missed the memo correction. Okay. So I apologize for that. Jeannie, me too.
I don't see that resolution anywhere. Yeah, it's, I see the memo. And I see that, but I don't see the resolution.
It should be.
Oh, is it? Okay, that is the resolution.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't.
It's in your page.
It's 2022-03.
Okay. Yeah, because it doesn't indicate the number on the top.
Right. The document we got from the bank, I could not edit. So I apologize for that. But yeah, and the memo was incorrect. So I'm sorry, the resolution, correct resolution number should be 2022-03.
And I don't know if it makes any difference, but my name is misspelled.
Probably no big deal.
We can correct that.
All right. Thank you for catching that. If there is nothing further, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
That resolution passes. All right. Item seven, Resolution 2022-04. This is the cancellation of the April election. And just for public knowledge, that is because there are just enough people to fill the openings, the vacancies on the board. So this is Resolution 2022-04. And what this means is that on, let's see, swearing-in day, which is going to be the first Tuesday in May, Todd Dixon will become the mayor. Sean Ives will become a trustee. Nicholas Donzello, trustee. And we will welcome back Cindy King as trustee, who will join Catherine Guthrie.
And I should mention before we get this signed, when I printed this, I didn't know what the terms would be. But the trustees have, or future trustees have all come to a consensus. So Nicholas Donzello will be through April 2024. And Sean Ives and Cindy King will be through '26. So thank you to the three of them for stepping up and committing to that. We appreciate it. And tell your friends, we need people on the other boards.
Yeah.
So I would like to move that we approve Resolution 2022-04 as amended with the dates on there.
I'll second that.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes. Congratulations out there. And Cindy, look at you. Item eight is Pike Speaker Rural Transportation Authority Citizen Advisory Committee Reduction. Anyone want to talk about that?
Absolutely. So this is something that I believe you've been briefed on at prior meetings. We did meet with Rick Summberg from the PPRTA. And in explaining it to me, basically, there were additional members that were added to the PPRTA board in Kalahari. And them being able to kind of want to stabilize the voting power and distribute it between the communities. They did not request there to be any formal resolution regarding this, but they did want to have some direction on what your pleasure regarding the two options that are presented here are. In either scenario, there are a couple of different things that changes. In either scenario, the Town of Green Mountain Falls will be reduced to one vote as they proposed it. I think the biggest difference is, is that with option one, there is a greater potential that an additional at-large alternative seat could be occupied by a town designee. Also, with option number one, in the event of a split decision, an odd number of votes can be achieved. With option number two, Manitou Springs retains their second vote, but the number of at-large alternatives remains the same and would be two less than proposed in option number one.
Clear as mud.
Yeah.
Yeah, neither one is, in the big picture, makes a huge difference to us. But overall, Manitou is probably going to want to retain their two votes. And Manitou can go either way in the voting. They can vote with small towns or large cities. So in a lot of ways, I would like to see us go with one, just to have another at-large potential vote from the small towns.
And also to have the opportunity to have no need for tiebreaker votes. It's kind of odd that they didn't have that extra person at-large to the option two also.
There, yeah, I have, there's been a lot of discussion about it. And it really comes down to how to split the votes with Kalahari joining. So, Board, any preferences?
My preference is one, just because of the overall number.
Catherine, do you have any opinions?
I don't have a strong opinion, but option one looks good.
Well, then, I would motion that, as a town, overall, we are in favor of option one, which does reduce Manitou's vote, but does give potential for another at-large vote for the small towns.
So can we have our CAP representatives here? Do you have anything to add?
Not really. From, from the perspective of the town, it's kind of a distinction without a difference.
Right.
Yeah. We have one vote, no matter what happens, as opposed to two. Now, they did, it's informal, but it's kind of an understanding that at the moment, one from Green Mountain Falls, for example, who loses their position as a representative to the town, can be moved into an at-large position. So Anne Ash, for example, should she choose to remain on the CAP, could become an at-large member. So, you know, as long as the people from the smaller towns want to remain, they can still be on the committee. Maybe they just would no longer officially represent the town to their own.
I think, you know, having been through PPRTA for a while, I think the small-town representatives, regardless of where they're from, have been very thoughtful about representing small-town interests. And I, for one, really appreciate that. So I would motion that the town is approving, or is in favor of 2021. And I suppose my motion is directing staff, if you would please let them know. And so that we make this good and legal, that's a motion. And is there a second?
Yes, a second.
Good and legal?
Good and legal, which is how I like things to be done. And if there is no further discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And there you go, good and legal it is.
So, and one other thing I'd like to bring up that, I think we need to make the recommendation that Craig Giddin continue as our representative for Green Mountain Falls.
I think we did do that at the last meeting.
Was he the official one and Anne was the second one?
Yeah.
Because Anne is very willing to.
Anne is totally in favor of that.
So, yeah. Yeah.
All right. Me and industry confirm that, but that is what we had voted on at the prior meeting. All right. And Craig, thank you. We appreciate your service for us. Item nine is the RFP for El Paso County Community Development Block Grant. Want to give us a rundown on that?
Absolutely. It's my pleasure to have this on your plates today. This is attached in your packet, is a bid packet for the RFP. It includes all of the required documentation and has been proofed by our representative at El Paso County. Her recommended changes have been implemented. The one remaining thing that we will need to do is within 10 days of going to bid, publishing for bid, we will need to reach out and get the current Davis Bacon wages for our area to be included in that packet. So with your approval, that is something that I go ahead and do. And then we will be able to get it out on bid net, and I'll prepare a contract.
All right. Board, do you have any questions? I would like to say that this has been a long time coming, and it's been a labor of love for many years. And I am just super glad to Catherine and former trustee Deani Lou, who stepped up and did this, grant writing for this last piece of the lake. And I'm super grateful to you, Becky, for running with this as well.
Now, one concern regarding timeline. Do we have a deadline date? Because I think with all the activities coming up this summer, with Green Box, Bronc Day, with weddings, things like that, do we know? Or are we recommending a timeline in the RFP?
Absolutely. So there is a timeline to be implemented if you approve. I can certainly adjust it if you think something's more appropriate. But it was recommended that we go ahead and go out to bid in March. That allows enough time to award a bid, get a contract in place for you all to approve a contract. And then for us to begin a pre-bid meeting, or not pre-bid meeting, but a pre-construction meeting for this project. Ideally, we go ahead and open the bid, or we approve a bid on March 16th, which allows some time in April. And then, you know, with the summer months, we do have to have this project complete by November 9th. That's a pretty fun deadline.
Is that the grant?
The grant deadline. And.
Use it or lose it date?
Absolutely. And I think it'll be a huge win for Green Mountain Falls to have that completed with CEBG as well. But it should be, it should allow for enough time after the lake has begun to thaw to implement those projects and certainly can work around any of the community events that are already scheduled.
And Nate, thank you. I know this is a lot of work on both of your parts. So with that being said, if there's nothing further, I would like to direct staff to continue with the RFP process. That is my motion.
I'll second.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes. Becky, do you need anything else from us to get that started?
Not at this time, thank you.
Great, thank you. Item 10 is the special event application for Bronc Day 2022. Margaret, do you want to give us the highlights on that?
Well, it's the 84th Annual Bronc Day, so everyone needs to come and feel like you're eight years old again, because it's the funnest day of the year. And just, we're planning on doing our parade, booths, food vendors, musical entertainment, games. Pancake breakfast is kind of up in the air. The fire department isn't going to be sponsoring that anymore, but we will be looking for alternate people to possibly help us do that. And the first planning meeting is actually next Monday evening here at Town Hall. So if anybody is interested in helping to keep this tradition going and alive, we'd love to help.
All right. Now, of course, the question that is always the question, is there an event fee for this?
To be honest, this is my first special events permit application. So I told Margaret we'd just throw it on here and figure out the details later. I assume it's a well-oiled machine at this point. So, and obviously, one of the community's most important events. So we will get it straightened out if you wanted to move to approve pending all fees and paperwork.
Typically, it's $500 for the special event fee. That's what's on our, that's what's on our thing. And then it's $200. And then it's $200 for the, um, Marshals Office. And then, um, Becky, fortunately, I talked to her on Friday, and we do have some alternate recommendations for, for places for me to call for additional support staff for the day. And generally, the, the committee hires the, the additional. So, so like the $200 typically is like for the road closures and coordinated with the Marshals Department, stuff like that, so.
Well, I would move that we approve the special event application pending a discussion between applicant and staff regarding fees.
And, uh, and insurance and-
And insurance, which always has to follow.
Well, yes, and we always, that's through the town and that's through SIRS.
Yeah, we, we confirmed that with SIRS and, um, so we know that's good, um, as far as insurance, so, um, just a matter of dotting the i's and-
Right.
Crossing t's on all the paperwork and fees, but, um, we trust the, uh, the, uh, committee to, uh, work with us to get it all right, so we will get it done.
All right, I'm pretty sure that will be reported back. So there is a motion on the table.
I'll second.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item F-11 is reports. First item is trustee reports. Catherine?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Margaret?
Um, I just have a couple of, I just want to bring in FYI to everyone. I'm, I'm our representative on the PPACG Board, and, um, there's quite a bit of legislation, proposed legis, legislation coming up. And, um, I just want to, want to kind of briefly go through the list and let everyone know what PPACG as a body is, how they're, how they're planning on, on recommending. There's a House Bill 22-1007 Assistance Land Owner Wildfire Mitigation. And that, um, position is that the, the Board supports that. It'll provide money to support and encourage mitigation. House Bill 2020, or 22, 1012, Wildfire Mitigation Recovery, again, PPACG supports that. And that supplies, provides money through grants for wildfire mitigation. Um, there's a 1026, that's an Alternative Transportation Options Tax Credit. That's a support, and it provides encouragement to support the alternative transportation without being an unfunded mandate. Um, there's a statewide regulation, 1028, of controlled intersections. And the committee's position on that is opposing it. It takes away local control and doesn't consider how, how each intersection is unique. House Bill 1035, Modernization of the Older Coloradans Act. The position is support. This updates the Older Coloradans Act to help address the current needs of older adults. Um, 1051, Mod Affordable Housing Tax Credit. The position is support. This bill extends the affordable tax credit out until 2034 and increases the aggregate cap for years 2023 to 34. Um, State Bill 22-002, Resources for Volunteer Firefighters. And the committee, or the Board's position on that is in support. And it says this bill will assist volunteer fire departments, who are the majority of fire departments in rural areas, by letting counties reimburse volunteer and providing general fund money. Um, State Bill 2022-07, double oh seven, really, um, Increase Wildfire Risk Mitigation Outreach Efforts. The position is in support. And this bill will help people know their risk level and will provide them information on how to mitigate their risk. State Bill 2022-016, Modifying Department of Transportation Governance. And, where is my thing? And the, um, the position on this one is to monitor it. This bill has some good ideas, but it only has one sponsor at this time, so it's unlikely to go anywhere. So those are some, that's some upcoming legislation that, um, the PPACG Board is following at this time. And that's pretty much all I have to report.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the legislative updates. Cindy?
Uh, you have nothing.
All right. Committee reports? Do we have anything?
No, I did not, uh, receive any committee report, but along the lines of, um, uh, all the wildfire potential legis, legislation out there, Becky and I did go to Teller County Wildfire Committee Council. And just to, um, I, Becky was familiar with that from her previous job, and I went along just because I've been involved with the Fire Mitigation Committee. And, um, they also were talking about some of those potential bills that could be very, um, impactful, um, with funding on the local level. But also, we, um, so obviously, there's hope for all of those bills, uh, to go through to provide, uh, funding, um, for the town or the fire department or whatever. Also, we talked about, uh, that council is, um, wanting to plan some citizen engagement and education. In particular, one main event probably coming up in March, April, something like that. And the Fire Mitigation Committee has also been talking about doing, uh, something. So, um, I volunteered that the town would essentially put its efforts to help, uh, with the Teller County effort, uh, instead of, you know, yeah, instead of just us having maybe 20 people at some event, you know, we could, um, combine that with, excuse me, the Teller County effort. So, uh, just volunteered our energy to go towards that event, and that'll most likely be a combo in-person slash Zoom, uh, meeting for, you know, in order to get maximum, uh, participation. So, um, I will, will continue to be in contact with that council and working on, um, something like that, so.
Great, thank you. Um, along with committee reports, uh, just a reminder that there will be an all-boards training that will be coming up this spring, so everyone can participate and, um, be trained in the legalities of what it's like to be on boards and committees.
And that, I don't know if it's a requirement, but it's certainly something that we've done through SIRS, correct, the last few years? And, um, it probably helps with our insurance rates, I would guess. But, um, definitely good training for all the boards and committees to attend. I've seen it a couple of times myself, and it's very, um, very enlightening and helpful, so. Uh, one other, just for Planning Commission, um, Mike Frye, uh, put in his volunteer application, so thank you for that. And, um, uh, so that'll help with the numbers on that committee, um, or the commission, uh, until Todd and Sean depart that, and then we'll have to, uh, fill some more spots.
Yeah. Pardon me. Land use code, I'm encouraged with some of our latest, uh, discussions with Nina, so I'm hoping that we have something to present to you that's probably going to be March, April timeframe.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm encouraged. I was, we were struggling there for a little bit, and I think we're back kind of on the same page now and moving forward.
Perfect. That's a lot of work, and we really appreciate it. Land use code is a important thing, and it's good to be, uh, kept up to date with that. We've had a few, uh, older rules in there.
Well, what you're going to see is you're going to see something with threshold for major and minor type reviews. Minor is what goes through staff, major ones that go through Planning Commission. We're also going to have some tables on land use codes. And initially, you're probably going to see some blanks on things we're recommending that we don't do.
That sounds great, and we've been working towards that goal for a long time, so that's great.
And it sounds like it's really going to streamline the process for residents. So I think that's really important, too.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, and just to speak to the timeline on that a little bit, our hope is to, um, have a public hearing and then, um, have the, the final draft, uh, to Planning Commission, um, on April 12th. Uh, that'd be the Planning Commission regular meeting. And then, um, since the new trustees will be sworn in May 3rd, then we hope we can turn that around, have the public hearing on May 3rd potentially, or a meeting soon after that, um, for, uh, the, the recommended draft to go in front of the board then. So, um, that's kind of what the timeline is looking like right now, barring no major, um, rewrite or major objections.
Comments.
Yeah, too many, um, dicks and comments, no. It's great, it's great. We, thank you for all your attention to that, Todd, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Uh, staff reports. So you're speaking, so you might as well continue.
Keep going.
Yeah, mine's up here. Um, there's a lot, uh, going on, but, uh, a couple of highlights. Uh, we did receive this 92,000 and change, um, reimbursement through that ARPA money. And that was for, um, basically Public Works Maintenance and Labor throughout last year. That, I don't know how that 92,000 number was, um, calculated initially, but that was our max, so basically you just had to submit a report to max that out. Um, and then we have that $45,000 from the PPR TA, PPR TA, uh, for, um, road maintenance pending. Did get an email saying they accepted it, so we should be getting that check, uh, any time. Uh, the pensions, uh, for employees have been established, and I've, uh, met with, um, the, the pension administrators, uh, just to make sure all that's accurate and, and good. Um, so want to thank the Board for that. That's very, uh, important, I think, as a, obviously as an employee now, but also for the long run of the town to compete with other, um, local government agencies that have similar benefits, so thank you for that. Gone over the election. Licensing, uh, seems to be going well, um, in the MUNIREV system. I am getting, we are getting a couple of quotes, um, just to maybe further enhance the system a little bit. We don't know what those quotes are going to look like and if we can even afford them this year, but at least we'll know, you know, what that cost is. Uh, one, um, just to kind of streamline the STR, um, process a little bit, and the other one would be to add revocable permits into the system. That shouldn't be a big deal, but I think it's important to have a better way of keeping track of those. I've been doing a little bit better with, uh, Facebook posts and, um, and there's been a lot, some discussions, some of the committees about, um, the best way to connect with the town and share information, so, uh, I'm just trying to be more, um, structured and regular about, um, posting both on the website and the, using that news, um, news article feature on the website, but then also posting to the town Facebook page at least a few times a week. Uh, we talked about the volunteer needs, uh, tell your friends, we need people on these committees.
I think it should be a requirement that whoever's leaving has to bring a replacement.
That's good. Would you like to-
We're a buddy.
And I talked about, uh, the post office things, and we do have the two bulletin boards in there, so there is quite a bit of space in there. I took down all the census stuff, which took up quite a bit of space. Um, so we do have room in there for information, so, um, along with whatever we do, uh, normally. If anyone has any suggestions to post things, we can certainly do that. Short-term rentals, um, one in process right now in the comment period, uh, the sign is up on their property and also here on the Town Hall window. Another one pending, uh, just waiting on, uh, they already went through the whole mailing and comment period and all that, so just waiting on, um, proper, uh, finalization of documentation there. But after those, that'll be basically 49. I haven't, uh, Matt did a pretty good job of, um, auditing all those and leaving me with a good, um, database for all that that matched up to MUNIREVs and all that. So I think that's, uh, a good number there. And about every week, I think I, we get a call about what's the process for doing that, and I tell them, you know, that's the deal and you might want to hurry, so. Uh, but also Becky and I have some ideas about, uh, enhancing STR management, especially now, once we get to that 60 number, how do we manage that moving forward? And Becky has a lot of experience doing that, um, in Victor. So we'll have something, some suggested policies or something for you, probably in the near future. Um, and then the land use code Todd mentioned, um, and we talked about this, um, timeline a little bit, that's pushed back. We're kind of being a little bit too, um, I guess-
Aggressive.
Aggressive or, uh, whatever, trying to get this as soon as possible. But I think the timeline I just spoke about is, is pretty good, so. Um, and the budget is looking pretty good. She's at the near home stretch of that project, and, um, it's about two-thirds, um, spent. So I think we're doing pretty well on that. Um, and then this is just a list of permits, uh, recent permits, actually since I started in August doing the part-time planning role. Um, that's just a rundown of, um, uh, applications that the Planning Commission has approved and, um, gone through Pike's Peak Regional, well, when, when necessary. Uh, the sale of the town parcel, just received a check on that after all that, so that was a long process, but, um, we did receive those funds and the reimbursement for the attorney fees that were spent on that. So that was a total of like 50, $300 or something, so. Yeah, that's all I have now. Uh, just to note, uh, the Marshall, um, uh, he submitted this last month, um, but it was a little late to get on that agenda, so I put it on this agenda. Um, I didn't have one for this month, um, yet from him.
Well, it's February 1st. We should have January by now.
This works, thank you.
I'm sure. So can I bring one thing up with your report? I would like to publicly acknowledge and publicly thank Angie Spring for her work and diligence in creating this pension plan and, and doing the, putting, putting it together and getting it started for us, because she spent, um, a lot of time working on that.
Agreed, yes, it's very, uh-
So I just want to, I just want to make a very public statement of thank you to Angie. And I know that you guys have worked on it, uh, quite a bit too, but, but she was the one that got it rolling, so just thank you.
All right. Go ahead, De'Ani Manager.
Thank you. Um, so you do have my full report in your packets, but I, like Nate, I'm just going to go over a couple of highlights, and if there's anything that you'd like additional information on, um, please let me know. There are several things that I would like to, um, work with you on during a work session to, um, get some additional direction. I don't know how you'd like to proceed, but I think, um, some of the big things right now that are going on is our Comprehensive Roads Plan, which was approved. Um, that RFP is in draft form currently. Um, we'll be working with, um, our DOLA rep to make sure that it's complete and ready to go before it comes before you. And it should be done by our next meeting, so I'm looking forward to that. Your code project, uh, the last publication was in the newspaper on the 26th of January. Um, the code changes will take effect on, uh, February the 25th, which will be 30 days after that last publication, and we'll go ahead and update the website, um, once that occurs. Um, I've got a Public Works Report for you. Um, they did do that preliminary ICE testing, um, depths of 8 to 12 inches on the lake. They are reviewing some additional SIRS resources and will incorporate additional actions as they find appropriate. Um, they have received the parts for the grader, and repairs are in progress to get it ready for this upcoming season. Um, and they're continuing to work on some signage updates. In addition to that, they are reviewing the 2021 SIRS audit report and working to implement some of those changes as well. One last thing I wanted to touch on. We did learn of a potential additional wildfire mitigation opportunity at the Teller County Wildfire Council meeting through, and this will be through Department of DRFPC, Department of Fire Resources and Prevention.
For the state.
For the state. They do have a TAVA crew, which is a hand crew that would be willing to come out. They are free. They're able to work on private property. It would be on a limited basis based around their schedule, between them getting called out on fires, et cetera. So we have been approached to see if we'd like to participate in sort of a pilot project, working with some homeowners in some critical areas. Nate and I are kind of identifying some areas that are in that wildland urban interface that would seem to make the most sense and would help to supplement the work that CUSP is doing through their grant as their crews have been very limited. So we're talking through that. It would require that the homeowners be very flexible with, you know, $24 notice of, hey, we're coming tomorrow. So more to come on that once we have some additional details. Other than that, do you have any questions for me?
No, I don't. That looks, that looks good.
How did homeowners sign up for this opportunity?
We'll have to, we'll definitely get something out on the website and through social media resources. And I think that probably, you know, we'll work with DF-RPC. Bludgeoned that acronym a couple of times before I get it right to identify some of those targeted areas that where, like I said, that wildland urban interface, and probably reach out to the homeowners directly to see if they'd like to participate. And I think that that ends up being a very strategic way to accomplish.
Right, so it has more to do, it's location.
And just to add to that, the CUSP program, we do have information for that on the website for that grant program. It's, I think it's a three-quarter homeowner cost, but at least it helps a little bit. I have received a few calls, and the information's out there on the internet or on our website. So people can contact CUSP for that now. But this one is kind of new information for us, so we just need to kind of figure out how that works. And we don't, you know, we want to obviously be fair in how it, you know, how the operation goes. And we don't want to step on CUSP toes for the work they're planning. So there's a little bit of, a lot of moving parts in that. So just something for us to work on.
It also sounds like the legislation that Margaret mentioned, there was several.
Potential. You know how that goes. It's like hurry up and wait. Who knows how long it'll take them to go through committee and go through all of their processes.
Right.
I mean, it could be two years from now. But there's the, there's the potential.
Our state rep has been pushing this for a very long time. So, yeah, so anytime we get a little movement in that direction, I feel encouraged. And I, and thank you guys for keeping pushing on this. This is important for the whole town.
So Becky, I do have a question for you, something that wasn't addressed in your report. Do we have any updates about the documents that we have requested to be able to reopen Catamount? Do we know where that is in the process right now?
Absolutely. Jesse was reviewing a couple of sample, Jesse Stroh was reviewing a couple of sample land use agreements.
Okay.
Easement agreements.
Okay.
And passing them through legal. I did come up with a couple of different examples for similar projects that he was able to take. Hopefully they were helpful to him. Once he gets those through legal, they'll come before you.
Okay, okay. So we are definitely moving forward.
Yes, ma'am.
But I want to reiterate that the reason we didn't just immediately reopen it is because skipping this step is what got us here in the first place with some of these. And that's what's gotten us in trouble in the past. And we really want to be diligent to make sure that all of the paperwork is proper and in order for anything like this moving forward.
Absolutely. I'll reach out just to see if there's any empty.
Yeah, and there's, yeah. But I just, because it wasn't addressed, I just wanted to ask.
All right. Anything further? Item 12 is correspondence. This is the memo you've all seen about the parks restroom. I did want to say that when we discussed the approval for the workout space out there, we were told, as I recall, that the vault toilet would be adequate because pretty much no one would be using the workout space in the winter, as I remember that conversation. And so if they are now requesting that we have a heated bathroom, that wasn't what we had discussed at the time. So although I am not adverse to it, if the price is reasonable, I don't think that that is what we had agreed to. So if there's nothing further on that. Item 13 is for persons who are present who would like to speak on items that are not on this agenda. And if you do have something you would like to discuss, you may please approach and state your name for the record. And seeing none? Although I'm always hasty on that, so I'll talk really slow in case you think of something. Again, I want to thank everybody for your actions and your work the last two weeks. We had a very successful workshop that I think helped us bring a lot of items to the forefront and items to discuss historically, because we all have something to add to that. I really don't have anything further except thank you. Congratulations to everyone who's going to be on the board. And if there's nothing further, look at the time. We're going to adjust it, we're going to adjourn this meeting at 7:54.
Oh, wait, no, we're like an hour early.
Yeah.
Do we have to follow this?
Get the cards out. We'll play some poker in the meantime. This meeting is adjourned.